Good evening, everybody. The Board has just completed our executive session, which we began about 6:00 PM this evening in the Superintendent's office at 104 Gray Street here in West Caldwell, New Jersey. The purpose of that meeting was to discuss personnel, litigation, miscellaneous and old business matters. That meeting had been advertised and was compliant with the Open Public Meeting Act and NJSA 10:4-6, which is also known as Sunshine Law. The matters discussed will be made public when confidentiality is no longer required and formal action pursuant to said discussions shall take place only at a meeting to which the public has been invited. We are now going to begin our regular public monthly meeting at approximately 7:05 PM. The Board of Education meeting will be streamed live and all community questions and comments will be welcomed in person here at the Harrison Street Conference Room. The Caldwell, West Caldwell Board of Education regular public monthly meeting is compliant with the Open Public Meeting Act and NJSA 10:4-6, which is also known as Sunshine Law. Notices have been sent to the Progress, Caldwell, New Jersey, Star Legend, Newark, New Jersey, Tap into, West Essex, and have also been posted at the Board of Education Business Office here in the Harrison School Building at 104 Gray Street and have been delivered to both Clerks of Caldwell and West Caldwell for posting. Brian, can I ask you to take the role, please?
Yes. Student Representative Claire Kiernan.
Here.
Mr. Diambola.
Here.
Mr. Elko.
Here.
Ms. Sketty.
Here.
Ms. Grosso.
Here.
Mr. Cibaletti.
Here.
So five voting members present, we have a call.
Great, thank you. Please rise for the...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brian, do we have any communications to share?
None.
Dr. Conklin, the Superintendent's report.
I'm gonna wait to do my report until after you.
Okay. Great. So we're gonna just switch the President's report first and then we'll follow with the Superintendent's report. So for the first part of the President's report, I'm gonna ask our student representative to give us a few highlights on high school.
So the high school is starting their production of Radium Girls this Friday, the 18th, and showings will go Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And we also had a big win on Friday for the high school football team. We won against Newton and we're now Group Two, Section Two state champions. Our state-leading winning streak continues at 26 games currently. We're undefeated. Next Saturday, the 19th, we're gonna play Westwood at Franklin High School in the Group Two North Jersey State Championship. And there will be a VIP list at the ticket gate in each... Oh, sorry.
That's all right.
Tickets must be purchased online using the link that can be found on NJSIAA.com or .org/tickets.
Great, thank you. It's 2:00.
Yes, 2:00 PM at Franklin High School.
Thank you. A couple of points from the... One, unfortunately, I'm sure many people have seen or heard that there was a tragic event this weekend in our community. So we ask you to please keep the Anderson family, your thoughts and prayers, as they lost their home this weekend. There is a GoFundMe page, which is legit, and also Wilson School's next fundraiser. Chris, help me here.
Yeah, we're the next fundraiser is gonna be donating the proceeds to the family.
So if you are inclined or can help that family, please through GoFundMe or if you can help the Wilson School activity, that would be much appreciated. Secondly, there's obviously related to the curriculum, as I'm not sure if Danielle or Terry are here this evening. I'm not sure if they're here.
Terry's back.
Terry, there was an election last Tuesday. Terry Greenley and Danielle Mack are now going to be the new Board Representatives going into the new year. So based on the new curriculum, as we kind of alluded to last week, we are going to push the vote of the new curriculum into the new year. So obviously, they'll have plenty of time to hopefully review and contribute to that, you know, the review of that curriculum. So we are not going to be voting on that next month. That will most likely be pushed back, although it will be determined by the Board at that particular time, probably for the second meeting in January, we're assuming at this stage. So I just wanted to kind of leave that out there.
So currently, the administration continues to share all the information with the Board of Education. We are hopeful to have everything reviewed by the end of this week and then be able to share lessons with the entire community shortly thereafter. So we are still following the same timelines. We hope to... We're able to then post the lessons on the website for the community to review. We will still be holding our November 15th, our November... At Jefferson, our November 17th at the high school, and November 21st at the middle school for in-person meetings with those particular communities. So please, if you have not RSVP'd yet, to Jefferson, please RSVP. The high school, the same, and the middle school, the same.
And then lastly, I don't think I said it well enough, but I want to congratulate Terry and Danielle for the election this past week on behalf of Paul and myself. You know, we wish you luck and we're very happy with your involvement and continued involvement in the community.
And now, lastly, we want to pass it off. Do you want to talk about the play?
Yeah, so I just wanna just take a moment to just talk about Radium Girls. It's the play at the high school. It's this Friday at 7:30 PM, Saturday at 2:00 PM, Sunday at 2:00 PM. If you don't know the story, I encourage everyone to Google it. It's a true story based out of South Orange, New Jersey. So kudos to our new director for picking something here, cut right out of our very own Essex County. It's about a group of women, I think it's in the 20s or 30s, and they used to paint the faces on clocks. And they were told to get a fine point to lick the paintbrushes. The paint was laced with radiation. So what happened was their faces started to decay, they died of cancer, but it was a very historic court case out of South Orange, New Jersey, where they sued the government. And all of them but one died before they got to see it. The government did settle, but it's fascinating. And if you don't have anything to really do this weekend, I know some of you will be going to the high school game, but Friday night or Sunday afternoon, and for those of you that don't want to travel to Franklin, please come support our artists at the high school. They've worked so hard, and it's actually very cool because it's part of Essex County, it's part of our history. So I encourage all of you to come out and support our kids in the theater department.
Thanks, Julie. Now, we're gonna move to committee reports. I think we have one report this evening?
Yeah, thank you. So on November 3rd, 11:00 AM, the Facility and Finance Committee met. It was Dr. Conklin, Mr. McCarthy, Paula, and myself. And we went through a bunch of different things, but I think most salient to the community is one of the questions that had come up was hockey. So we don't have a hockey team. We have an agreement with West Essex where we partner with them and our kids play over there. And historically, the families of those hockey players had to pay some money to be a part of that team. The Board decided that, you know, we're gonna cover the cost of that for that hockey, for all the hockey families. So any high school kid who wants to play hockey, you know, they will continue to play with the West Essex team, but we agreed to cover the cost up to $30,000 for everybody, which is about $2,000 per family under the agreement. Is that about right?
Yes.
Yeah? Okay. Make sure I got that right. Second, it's silly, but it's a big driver and it's come up multiple times. We will have portaions at the various fields through the summer and the spring and the fall available. So if your kid is doing soccer or baseball or what have you, any of those at Grover Cleveland or at Jefferson or at Wilson or Washington, we'll have portaions available throughout the year. Again, the Board is absorbing that fee and we're looking into ways of maybe, you know, spreading that out amongst people who then rent the fields back from us. But for all the little kids who have to hold it for two hours of T-ball, you'll have an opportunity to actually use the bathroom. And then finally, we've been talking about it a little bit. For those of you who are familiar with Wilson School, it's more or less built like on a swamp land, but we are gonna be commencing some renovations to try to basically renovate and improve the field, specifically that diamond, the baseball diamond in the corner over there, and hopefully make that field a little more playable for, you know, the students at Wilson and also the community that wants to take advantage of the facility. So that was the thrust of the discussion at the Facility and Finance Committee.
Thank you, Chris. And now, we're gonna move to approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve minutes for the executive session of 10:322 and 10:1022, as well as the public session of 10:322 and the regular public session of 10:1022?
So moved.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Brian, can I ask you to take the call... Role, please?
Yes. Mr. Diambola.
Yeah.
Mr. Elko.
Yes.
Ms. Sketty.
Yes.
Ms. Grosso.
Yes.
Mr. Cibaletti.
Yes.
Five-zero motion carried.
Thanks, Brian. And now, we're gonna move to public comments on agenda items. Public participation shall be governed by the following. Participants must be recognized by the presiding officer and must preface their comments by the announcement of their name and address. Statements are to be limited to three minutes' duration and may only address items that are on the agenda at this particular time. Participants may speak no more than once on the same topic until all others who wish to speak on that topic have been heard, and all statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. So if anyone has any questions on the agenda at this time, please come up to the podium.
Hi, I'm Marissa Peddow, 95 Ravine Ave. Just a quick question about J, the Harrison School renovation project. I've probably missed that at other meetings. What does that entail?
Go ahead.
Oh, okay. So we are in the process of renovating this school here. It's gonna include moving... Approve some classrooms, we're gonna try to add five more classrooms, bring the administrative space into the center, and this school will then be able to either... We haven't finalized a plan to be a regular school, or it could be an overflow for some of the younger grades.
Okay, so how many classrooms will there be total when we're done?
I think it's...
Eventually, it'll be between 13 and 15 classrooms in the building, depending on how the classrooms and the space gets reutilized.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And I would just note that a good portion of the funding for those renovations was from grants, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Or the... Yes.
Yes, I would say the majority.
Right.
Hi, Liz Hart, 149 Ravine. I have a quick question in regards to the funding that the Board is funding for the ice hockey team. Has a comparable amount ever been supported for anything for the music or the arts by the Board?
So I... We did actually in our last meeting go through the drama budget. That was a request that the Committee had made, kind of, because the first question actually was, all right, how much are we spending for all the other sports, right?
Right.
We wanna make sure that everyone's covered. But yeah, no, the drama budget is pretty substantial. I mean, I can tell you that there's a couple thousand dollars allocated for backdrop and design. There's several people who are employed. There's a seamstress, I think, that we had on there onsite. There's a... There's this perception that, I think, the arts are underfunded and not given full shrift, and I would credit, I think I saw Herb, you know, in the audience, there he is, who kind of asked the same question and wanted to make sure that we were providing people with the resources. And we are... I mean, certainly, we'd like to flood every single one of these folks with money, right? But we have to also be, you know, financial stewards here, and we have to make sure that we're giving people enough to perform what they're performing and do what they're supposed to be doing. And, you know, I don't wanna speak for Paul or anybody else, but when we finished our review of the budget, it seemed like they were giving an adequate amount of funding.
Okay, so then, if something were to come up for something non-athletic, is that... What is the correct way to go about that? Because as a parent of a child who was involved in the arts last year, I personally had to buy my own costume. I was involved with a lot of, you know, parents that were coordinating, you know, just like a dinner or something for the kids to eat while they were practicing because there was literally zero budget. So for the future, what is the suggestion on how to go about, you know, obtaining those funds?
Well, I would... I would push back on the concept that there's literally zero budget because there literally is a budget.
Okay.
And we looked at it, and it's, you know, it's there. And the athletic teams also have booster clubs themselves that have to kind of chip in and help out with some of that stuff. And again, you know, we've... I take great pride as a member of this Board that we've gone to great lengths to make sure that we're renovating the Performance Arts Center. We're putting a lot of money into that. We're looking at renovations for the arts area, the building in the middle school as well. There's been a lot of focus on that. Can we afford to buy a costume for every participant in the play? You know, that's a good question, and I would defer to, you know, Dr. Conklin and Mr. McCarthy, but, you know, certainly, we have a budget. We follow the budget every year, and if there's a change to the budget, I think the teachers and the administrators probably know what the process is better than any of us.
Okay. And then I have a second question. It was related to something that you brought up, so I don't know if that counts as being on the agenda.
Can you hold... Would you mind holding a list?
Okay. All right. Yeah, no problem. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for items on the agenda at this particular time? Okay, if not, we're gonna move into specific areas for curriculum and technology.
I'll do it. Yep. Okay. So for curriculum and technology, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, I'd like to make a motion to approve items A through H on this evening's agenda, please.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Any questions or comments? If not, Brian, can I ask you to take a role, please?
Yes. Mr. Diambola.
Yes.
Mr. Elko.
Yes.
Ms. Sketty.
Yes.
Ms. Grosso.
Yes.
Mr. Cibaletti.
Yes.
Five-zero motion carried.
Thank you. Curriculum and technology?
We just... We just... Personnel.
Personnel?
Upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of School, motion to approve items A through Q under certificated, items A through I under non-certificated staff on this evening's agenda.
Do we have a second?
I'll second. Yeah, I'm sorry. Well...
Have any questions or comments?
No, except I... Liz, I just wanna draw your attention to, like, we added a band director at GCMS, and that's something that did come out of the meeting of the minds of the instrumental teachers. So, you know, if you just look, there's quite a few. We have a part-time elementary strings teacher that's being approved tonight, so there are quite a few additions to the music department on the agenda tonight.
Brian, take a role, please?
Yes. Mr. Diambola.
Yes.
Mr. Elko.
Yes.
Ms. Sketty.
Yes.
Ms. Grosso.
Yes.
Mr. Cibaletti.
Yes.
Five-zero motion carried.
Thank you, Brian. And finance?
Upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, motion to approve items A through J under finance and items A under facilities on this evening's agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? Brian, take a role, please.
Mr. Diambola.
Yes.
Mr. Elko.
Yes.
Ms. Sketty.
Yes.
Ms. Grosso.
Yes.
Mr. Cibaletti.
Yes.
Five-zero motion carried.
Ms. Sketty, policy, please.
Thank you. On the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, motion to approve items A and B on this evening's agenda.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Questions or comments? Brian, take your role, please.
Mr. Diambola.
Yes.
Mr. Elko.
Yes.
Ms. Sketty.
Yes.
Ms. Grosso.
Yes.
Mr. Cibaletti.
Yes.
Five-zero motion carried.
Thank you. And now, we're gonna move to public comments. Similar rules apply. Public participation shall be governed by the following. Participants must be recognized by the presiding officer and must preface their comments by the announcement of their name and address. Statements shall be limited to three minutes' duration. Participants may speak no more than once on the same topic until all others who wish to speak on that topic have been heard, and all statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. So if there are any other questions or comments, please feel free to come up to the podium.
Hello, Herbert Feeks, 48 Laurel Place, West Caldwell, New Jersey. So I'm not here to complain that you don't have the money for the arts. I have a little different spin on it. The problem I see, it's very difficult to get the money needed for the theater expenses. Specifically, it becomes a big obstacle. I import a board to correct that policy that these expenses need to be verified, protected. This policy is preventing our theater program from excelling. Your policy is punitive and doesn't work. It shows a lack of trust for your teacher and director by questioning every expense he puts in. I understand the policy requires your estimates and written approval, and our show in the fall is like two months' time. How is it possible to get estimates, find all the props, all the costumes in two months? Who else are you going to get to help our director? Parents, volunteers? I think they are tapped out. Our director needs at least two or three other people on staff. The football team has plenty of people on staff. They're a championship-caliber team. Everybody knows that. Where is the theater program plan? I was told last year, things were in progress. I haven't seen or heard any of any programs that are gonna be happening in our grammar schools. Buying from pre-approved companies, every item is impossible. I spoke to our past director. Our items for theater are not available in just one place. Get estimates, find props for the entire show. Our music in more clubs puts out an extraordinary effort to find all these props. Costumes are for the parents to find and to expense, especially for Radium Girls this year. Are we now a community theater program? We need to not just check a box here. We need to have passion, show excitement so that the students are excited. I heard Juliana, she nailed every time for the show, told us when it's gonna be. I look at the ticket sales, it's maybe 25 people right now for a Friday night show. It's pretty sad. So why is that, I ask? The students are feeling the lack of enthusiasm. The lack of expenses used on this show are not because the funds are not available. Chris Elko just said that. Plenty of funds are available. Actually, Mr. McCarthy even showed me how much funds were available. And your... The expenses, the show will not be as great as it can be or should be. It's not going to happen. You should take the time to talk to the students, ask them how they feel, do a Google Classroom survey, find out, what do they feel about the set this year? What about their stress level this year that they're feeling? The students are questioning, why are they being ostracized here? They work hard and put forth the effort. Is the administration holding them back? Sports is held in high regards here. It's time to make theater a better culture. I hope the Board now understands my concerns. They investigate this information that I have said today and that they're able to fix the problem for our next show, Grease, and they fix this for all our future shows. Thank you for your time.
Any other questions or comments?
Of course I do. Jessica Crown, 183 Forest. I'm a little more prepared than usual, not really speaking off the top of my head, but I think that what I have to say speaks to also the other concerns of the theater department and music and arts, also athletics, everything. So following the last meeting, I went home and watched the livestream to get a holistic view because being in the room is very different in the heat of the moment. Hearing different perspectives, even ones I don't agree with, I sat and thought, we need to look at the bigger picture here. The bigger picture is that we have weakness in our administration and a gap in our processes. And since August, we've received two different draft curriculum. One with materials and resources with very few eyes on it, including those of the Board, and one completely lacking transparency. We have so many parents with unanswered questions, members of the community with concerns, and a lack of confidence in the administration and the Board. And I hate saying that because I like you all. This new curriculum presents a lot of challenges because there are many different perspectives and beliefs and controversial issues within it. This brings our community to a crossroad and potentially splits us. It splits our children. This is what has happened to our country. This is not what should be happening to our community, and especially within our elementary schools, middle school, and high school. Why are you bringing that to our children? The Caldwell, West Caldwell District is one that is very reputable. People have moved... People move here specifically for the school system. We have parents sitting at home right now with kids approaching kindergarten with no voice in the matter. They want what the Caldwell, West Caldwell District has always been able to achieve, and I think we can do better. This type of curriculum is something we've never dealt with before. We haven't had anything this controversial to discuss. The Board of... Just an FYI, the Board of Ed livestream hit 1,700 views this week, and that should speak volumes. Anywhere prior to that was an average of 130. How we navigate through this matters. It is the responsibility of the subject matter experts to write curriculum. It is the responsibility of the administration to be forthcoming with what it all means. That hasn't happened. We had three meetings with mixed messages, and we have one more coming tomorrow. And that's my school, my home base, and I'm looking forward to seeing that presentation. At this time, I'm seeking solutions. I'm seeking answers because the administration has had the entire summer and fall to get their ducks in a row with this curriculum. The first draft contained inappropriate content, meaning content that had a politicized agenda surrounding anti-capitalism and an overall negative view of the world for our children. The definition of indoctrination is the process of teaching a person or group to accept a set of beliefs uncritically. I'll quote the sample video when speaking about gender and sexual liberation, universal health care, and et cetera at the first meeting that we had. The child responds with, "I don't know what some of those things are, but I get what you're trying to say." It is an acceptance of those beliefs that are within that video, and that is the message that we're sending to our children. And that is indoctrination. And that is the concern of so many parents in the community in general. I understand from the last meeting that the curriculum doesn't usually involve materials, and it's up to the teachers to develop those things. We don't trust that. I would like to know who was behind placing that video in the curriculum in the first place? Who reviewed it? Who vetted it? Where did it come from? Because there's a curriculum committee, did it go to them? We don't know. We don't see that, and we don't hear about it. I would like to know... Nope, moving along. The execution of this process has shown we have weaknesses in our district and requires parent involvement, and I wholeheartedly believe that. And after hearing that gentleman speak about the arts, that parent involvement is required on several fronts. The two newly-elected Board members felt strongly at the candidate debate about parents within the district holding a seat on the Board, and furthermore, that everyone deserves a seat at the table. And I'm asking the Board at this time to develop a parent advisory committee to be a part of the conversation. This exists in many districts throughout the state and the country and is a solution for filling the gaps that we have. Thank you.
Hi, Liz Hart, 149 Ravine. My question is, what is the rationale to pushing the vote? Because I presume that since 2020, when the original law was passed or whatever, like the Amendment right was passed for the revised curriculum, they're seeing... The current Board has had, you know, two years roughly, right, to review that, to plan out the execution of that? So I would just like to understand why then now that this is going to get pushed again.
So I'll take that. My personal belief and what I've shared with the Board and what I felt, and I believe the Paulas would agree with this, is first off, it's only being pushed out a month. That's number one.[1717.83] That's number one. So I don't think it's going to change or determine or hurt anything along those ways. And in all honesty, the two new elected members should have, should view it, should have their input, and should be able to contribute to whatever that is.
So I understand like that it's not being pushed out, so like that it's, the rollout then is only one additional month. My concern is that the two additional, the new newly elected board candidates have not been privy to the, you know, 25 months or whatever it may be, where negotiations, discussions, comments may have had. So how are they supposed to get that caught up that quickly to provide that?
They will be invited to curriculum meetings that are coming up. So they will have ample time to review the materials as well as, quite honestly, if they don't feel they're up to speed at that point, pushing this out to February is totally fine as well. So we're going to leave it to the next board to kind of make those decisions on the timeframes.
Okay. And is there, do you, what, actually, never mind, I don't know that you could answer. Okay, thanks, that's it.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Obviously, by looking at me, you can tell I don't have kids in the school system. I don't even have grandchildren in the school system. I am lucky enough to have my grandchildren in that great state down south. That is not going to do this.
Excuse me, miss. Miss, would you mind just sharing your name and address, please?
Oh, Carla Maris, Ashland Street, Caldwell, New Jersey. I just was looking up some things and there are just some things that I think maybe all of you, the new member, could look into. And it's different towns and what they're going to be doing. I'm sure you've heard that Garwood has already decided they're not doing it at all. Deptford High School, a health teacher down there, Deborah Shoemaker, said, "To handle the questions," her answer was, "Go home and ask your parents." Lakewood is automatically excluding the opt-out. Cherry Hill is revising their own. Moorestown, the superintendent said, "He would interpret the most controversial standards for the eighth grades. He will get a lesson about sex in the same way, they will get a lesson about sex in the same way that students learn what ocular means having to do with the eye." We all know, I guess we do, that East Hanover is the best, in my opinion, has decided they will give it all the last day of school. Great. Don't go to school the last day. So I, I think, you know, if you look up and see some of the things these school districts are doing, maybe we can revise it in a way that will help these parents. I went to school here. I lived here my entire life, and that's the only reason I'm standing here, because it's making me sick sitting here.
Hello. My name is Justine Reyes, 42 Park Avenue. I would like to start off by reiterating some of the things I said at the last meeting. Now that I've had time to think clearly on it, I'd just like to reiterate some of the things I said and ask some questions. I would like to start by saying that, again, I am vehemently against any form of hatred, bigotry. I abhor violence of any kind. I also want to restate that a large part of this health curriculum I find positive and benign. Talking about hygiene and things of that nature, I think are positive for our students. What I find problematic is twofold. One is the lack of clarity and transparency to the parents about these materials. We're given paperwork that says one thing, and then we go in person to the meetings and they say, "No, scratch out these lines. We didn't mean to say masturbation, or we didn't mean to say gender identity." And then there it is again on the papers that we receive again and again. This has bred a lot of uncertainty and distrust. As far as the actual curriculum goes, my main issue is the topic of gender identity being presented to elementary and middle school children. I would say high school as well. This is a hotly contested issue that is mainly ideological. Just as God and religion are not a part of our public school education because it is a belief system that not everyone subscribes to, it should go hand in hand that ideological discourse on gender does not belong in our public school education. Our main goal as parents are to keep our children healthy and safe, and that should be the same goal as this curriculum and the Board of Ed. I don't think presenting non-biological information that is paradigm shifting and confusing for adults, adults, should be considered healthy or safe information to give our children. I strongly believe that we do need our schools to be safe spaces for all children, including gender non-conforming children. We need to focus on anti-bullying, on kindness, and respect for everyone. The antisemitic graffiti at the middle school recently is a blight on this community. And it shines a light on our need to focus on diversity, inclusion, and what being a good citizen and a good community member means. People of all races, ethnicities, religious backgrounds, sexual orientation, transgender people, and just people who don't conform to societal norms should be safe in our schools and our society. If we promote respect and inclusion, we can achieve this by providing resources to those that need them without pressuring children into adopting radically different beliefs systematically. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments?
Good evening. My name is Lou Farrar, 29 Dawson Drive. The question that I had was actually for the board attorney. Last week, when you had spoke, you had said that, you mentioned some of the potential consequences if we do not implement this curriculum. And I think some of the things that you had mentioned were that the board could be removed entirely, we could lose all funding. And I think that there's a lot of people within the community that are opposed to this, but the one reason why they're not speaking out is because they're of this impression that we're going to lose all funding. Is that likely?
Mr. President, if I can respond? Thank you. Likely, no. I tried to be clear about this last time. I was asked the potential of penalties. Those are, as you've listed, potential penalties. They are not likely penalties for a district to impose. Again, the commissioner has a wide range of penalties that can be imposed on school districts for violating any state law. There is no specific penalty aligned to the law for, if you do this, you will be punished why, right? Those are all possibilities.
Yes. And I think that there's, part of the misinformation to the public is that that funding is going to be stripped because we've heard in numerous meetings that we have to teach this material because it's state mandated. We have no other choice. But it seems like that isn't, that that's not true. So I, I guess what I'm trying to learn, and I don't know, maybe other people, I don't want to speak for them. Is this something that the board wants to, to implement? So each of the board members that are here, is this something that, that you want to see implemented? Or is it something that, because previously we were told, you have to do it because it's the state? And we heard several, several people mention it, "Oh, it's state mandated, we have to do it, we don't have a choice." And it seems as though we do have a choice.
Again, Mr. President, I can, I can, whether, whatever this board decides, I can say, it is a true fact that it is a state mandate, right? So that is a true statement. It is a mandate from the state.
Correct. But it's not true that we would lose funding. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Whether or not the district loses funding would be up to the Commissioner of Education. If the district were to violate a state mandate, including from the Department of Education, the commissioner would have broad authority. What that authority is, the commissioner has not come out ahead of time and said, districts who are doing, you know, another member for the public named a bunch of districts and things that they're doing, some of which don't abide by the law, some of which are a district interpretation of the law. The commissioner hasn't yet to come out and say what penalties, if any, those districts will face. So it's, it's an unknown at this point. It is a state mandate, it's not known what the penalty will be.
Okay. I mean, I just wanted to confirm that it would be unlikely for that to happen. And the second thing that I just wanted to mention as well, we had talked about, I think Jessica mentioned before, about what some other districts are doing, and I think importantly, if, for those of you that are home, to check a school like Middletown, which has a plethora of lessons, resources, specifics of each of the units and exactly what they're going to teach. And they were given the same timeline that we were given as well. And I think that's one of the things that as parents, you know, we all, we all moved here for the school district. We love this town. We, I, I don't want to move. I love West Caldwell. But at the same time, we deserve more. And I, I don't know when this vote is going to occur, but I think that we're entitled to some of the information that other towns are getting. And it seems, not that it seems, I know that we're not getting that same information. So if the board with the administration can start working on that, I think it's something that we as parents, we as members of the community are all entitled to. Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments?
Dr. Conklin, can you confirm that the district will be sharing lesson plan information prior to the vote with the community?
Yeah, so we, we had discussed that before. We, we're continuing to share the information with the board members. We're continuing to make sure that you have all the information to review before you make any final determination. And we will be publishing that on the website, where again, we're hopeful by the end of this week, as long as the board members have an opportunity to review everything we, we could share with them this week. Hopefully by the end of this week. So then that'll be published to the community for the interview.
Hi, Laura Jeanette, Seven Cascade Place. So just to follow up to that statement, are these sample lesson plans or are these going to be complete lesson plans?
These are sample lesson plans.
Okay. So that means that we're not going to be able to see a full array of lesson plans that are going to be given to our children ahead of time? So the board will be voting on something from a sample of lesson plans?
So the board will, will see the full sample, the community will see the full sample of lesson plans. Again, the resources may change between now and the final presentation. The, the parents will receive, if the resources do change before the actual lesson, the parents will receive them two weeks ahead of time regardless of the changes. It's very difficult to provide a lesson plan that you may be presenting in June, in November, because materials may change, activities may change. So that's why we're calling them sample lesson plans. In case there is a change or an alteration, alteration to that lesson plan for whatever reason, I don't want people to feel like we weren't giving them the actual lesson plan. So we're calling them samples.
Okay. And then can the board say, like see the lesson plans and say that this isn't sufficient information for us to have a vote, and we would like to delay it because we need more information? Does the board have the, the right to request that?
If I can, yes, and, and that's happened to date. That's why there hasn't been a vote, frankly, is that, that the board has made that request. So again, just to be clear, what the board is voting on or will vote on eventually is the curriculum. Generally speaking, for all the various curricula, for every subject K through 12, the board approves the curriculum, but the actual lesson plans are developed by the teachers and their supervisors on a unit or day-to-day or even yearly basis. That typically the board does not approve lesson plans. They approve the curriculum, the lesson plans are based off of. The board is going above and beyond, given the sensitive nature of this particular curriculum and having the sample lesson plans put out to the parents, and because there is that specific opt-out ability under the code.
Right. So it does seem very different than in the, in the past.
Than standard curriculum.
Okay. And then just one more question, if I may. What, this opt-out, does the district have any idea about how many people are going to opt-out? And do you think it would be wise to have a survey of the community and how they feel so you're better prepared of how to handle the opt-out children and what they're going to be taught, where they're going to be placed? Is there a reason why we can't have a survey to kind of see how the community feels about the curriculum as it stands before the vote?
Again, the, the idea of a survey may be something that we decide is appropriate after the lessons go out. If I wasn't able to get probably close to 95% responses from the community, it would be very difficult to make that decision. So I'd rather have that closer to the actual implementation of the lesson or people opting out now. And again, depending on the alternative assignment is going to really be dictated by the number of kids who are opted out by their parents for these lessons. So if I have two kids, it's a lot different than I have half the class.
Right. That's why if, for whatever, whatever material you have, and it's unfortunate if it's not a great amount like other districts are providing. But if before the, the board votes on this, it would seem sensible to have an idea of how the community is going to support this so that you're prepared. And the board, I would think, would want the information, are 95% of our children going to opt-out? And then we have to come up with these alternative lesson plans that are also going to be very important. What are these children going to be taught that aren't having now the curriculum? So I, it seems to me that that's very important information for the board to make an informed decision and to have an informed vote prior to the actual vote, not two weeks before. But that's just my, okay, thank you.
Last week, somebody had asked, you know, of the board members who supported this. And I think, Mr. Sipolati, you were the only one who responded. Are you all willing to, you know, tell us now if you support this gender identity and these other controversial things? Because it seems to me that there's ten of, you know, I have a dozen of you that are going to make the decision for us. And if there were, the majority of you didn't support this, maybe the attorney would have a different position on, you know, what we'd be able to do. It seems like there's some leeway as to what other towns are doing. So I think it's fair that we ask you all to tell us how you feel about this curriculum that is behind, you know, behind a mask right now, because every week you're, every month, it's a different story.
I appreciate your question, but I'm not going to ask the board to answer that question at this time.
I think you should though. Why, why won't you each answer the question?
I appreciate your comment, but I'm not going to ask the board to answer that question at this time.
I, but why, why wouldn't you ask the question? I mean, don't you think that we should know who we're dealing with? I want to know what, what you think of this.
Let me speak, I will. Because information has not been fully shared yet. There's still questions going back and forth with the administrations and the teachers. So until the board has that full information, and in all honesty, until the new board members are part of this, it's not a fair question.
I think it is a fair question.
We disagree.
I think it's also a fair question as to how the curriculum is going to be taught. I want to know who's making up the curriculum and what kind of leeway there is between teachers. Because an older teacher and a younger teacher might have a different way of interpreting the curriculum.
The information will be shared when it's appropriate, it'll be shared.
You've been saying that for four months. In July, in June, when I started coming to these meetings, and I don't mean to be, you know, rude, we've been getting, you know, half stories and, and, you know, quite frankly, lies about, you know, a number of things. So I don't really believe you now.
Mr. Vultio, I, I have a lot of respect because I do know you've been coming consistently. About, about, not just about this, right? When you started coming, you had questions about other things.
I had questions about the, the COVID policies and what the other towns are doing. And I was told, you know, a bunch of different things. So I, you know, I don't really have a lot of confidence in what you tell me, you know, each time that we come here.
And when you came, you asked if we were going to be teaching kindergarten kids about masturbation.
I didn't ask that question.
No, no, no. We can go back to the videotape. But, and that's, and that's, and that's nobody's fault, right? That's just a concern that there's a lot of misinformation out there. We've heard the word misinformation a couple of times, and that's true. We're absolutely not going to be teaching that to kindergarteners. We never were, and we've said that. You also mentioned gender identity. We went through great pains last week to say that we're not talking about gender identity in second grade. We're not talking about transgender people in second grade. We've said that.
Please, can I just ask that there's one person speaking? If you do have a question or comment, again, repeating last week, if we have to go through this again, we have to ask it at the podium so that people live streaming can hear the conversations.
And let me be clear, we did, okay? Because I remember you specifically pulled gender identity out, and it was on the, it was on the list of the things that we publish in the curriculum. And it shouldn't have been, but it was. And we specifically said, gender identity is not part of the second grade curriculum.
But there, there was some confusion last week, right? Okay. So, so you, you're, you're highly unprepared since, since at least June. Hold on, let me just finish. Please. You're highly unprepared since at least June on a number of topics. I think we deserve to know who is going to be fighting for us. Somebody should have been fighting for us during COVID. Nobody did. Obviously, if somebody's not fighting for us now, I want to, you know, I mean, I think it's a fair question. Obviously, you don't want to answer it, so I'm going to leave my, have my own conclusions.
The answer to your question, and for those of you who are Wilson's parents, I was there as a parent at Wilson, right? And I said some of the things that you just said. I said, "We need more information," right? Until we have the information, we can't make the decision. We've got a lot of information now. We've got a lot more than we had before. But the board is not going to put something to the community that the board hasn't seen. And the board isn't going to say, okay, support or don't support something if you haven't seen it.
But you, but you did put something out, right? Couple of months ago, when the videos went out that nobody even knew were up. So right there, it erodes, you know, most of our trust.
The video went out, it was a mistake, okay? It was pulled down immediately.
But it doesn't matter though. It went out, you didn't know that night.
Correct.
Okay. So I think, I think it's a valid question to know where you each stand.
First off, your three minutes are up, so I'm going to make the last.
Okay, so you don't want to answer the question.
No. What I'm telling you is the video that went up was a mistake, okay? It was pulled down immediately. The conversations with the content of the video were correct.
The conversations with the content of the video were correct. I saw the video myself afterwards, it was not a good video, okay? Period. It was taken down. If, as Mr. Elko has said, there's been a bit.
But if there was a, I'm just, again, I think, what I'm trying to get to is if there was a different makeup, and I don't know, maybe yous all don't support it, if there was a different makeup, there would be potentially other solutions here. And we're not getting to other solutions, we're getting to a delay, and we're not going to approve it, and next week, and next month, and meet.
I'm going to respectfully disagree with you, but I'm not going to bring that question to the board.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Hi, Lisa Mahias, 83 Westville. I'm a little confused now. I'm confused, no, I'm really, I'm confused. Is anybody else confused? I'm confused. So I just pulled up the curriculum on my phone, because I was up here last week. I talked about the issue of gender identity being taught to second graders in June. And now it says gender roles, the topic has been changed on here. I printed it out at home, I read it, I've compared it to the state, compared it to Caldwell, West Caldwell. So if you're not intending on teaching second graders, when did that change? And also, when do you plan on teaching that idealistic type of information that's not rooted in truth? Do you know? Do you have a grade that you've decided that you'd like to teach that? You know, even like Justine said, it's, you know, Justine, it's very fair in a lot of things that she said. She's anti-hate. You know, I don't teach my children to hate anyone, but we need to live in reality here. Like, we need to live in reality. We're all in this room right now, that's real. You know, I could pretend I'm on a beach, but I'm not. I'm here with you guys when I should be with my one-year-old son and my five-year-old daughter, putting them to bed. I'm here with you, fighting for them, fighting for their sanity. I don't think that should be taught in any grade, ever, because it's not rooted in truth. Anybody can think what they'd like, and that's what scares me about this gender identity, we need to include people who believe that they're this and they're not. And we're going to support that to these children at any age, which is very confusing. And in that one document about trans, excuse me, transgender children, that basically excludes the parent from any knowledge of it, it's really disturbing. It's, it's wild to me that any individual other than that child's parent should think that they have authority there. I mean, you're not clothing our kids, you're not there with them at night, you're not putting them to bed, you didn't raise them, or I'm not allowing you to raise them, that's what the government would like to do. Last I checked, when my daughter couldn't breathe, had an asthma attack, none of you were there at 2:00 AM at Moorestown. I don't think you have a right to teach this. And I don't care what state of New Jersey says they think is fair or right, and that you're just following orders. A lot of people follow orders in history that are incorrect and wrong. I don't understand, I'm confused about your statement now, that second graders aren't going to learn this. So who's learning it, and when are they learning it? So we can fight for that grade too. Thank you.
What's the answer? What's the grade? Gender identity is being taught?
If you have any comments, please, again, come to the mic for your comments, please.
Ms., would you, would you mind just coming to the mic, just because we, can she just go first, just to get recorded?
Justine, 42 Park Avenue. Everyone clapped, and then there was silence on your part, and what is the answer? That's why we're here, guys, we want to know. That is the hotly contested issue. What is the answer?
What is the answer to exactly what is your question?
What grade is gender identity being proposed to be taught to our children?
I don't need sarcasm, I ask you a quick question so that can be recorded. Dr. Conklin, the, what was the second grade piece that they were talking about?
The second grade piece is about gender roles and gender biases, and then fifth grade.
I'm speaking now, I'm speaking because that roles was changed recently from the last meeting, since I brought it up at the last meeting, that it specifically said gender identity, second grade. What grade is gender identity going to be taught to the children in this town?
So we wanted to more clearly explain what the second grade was, so we felt roles is a better word to use, so we used that word to discuss. I don't.
So, roles will be discussed in second, if you have any questions or comments, I'm going to please ask you to come to the microphone. If you don't want to come to the microphone, please keep your comments to yourself. Thank you. Dr. Conklin, roles will be discussed in second grade, is that accurate?
In second grade, the roles, gender roles will be discussed, and then later on, fifth through eighth grade, it'll be more specific about identifying what those roles are, so as the students progress in their maturity level, that conversation will get a little bit more in-depth, and then finish through the high school.
That doesn't really answer the question. I mean, I think we all understand what we're talking about when we're talking about gender identity. We're not speaking about roles or stereotypes, which I in fact stated last time, are benign, right? Stereotypes of men and women do hold us back, and they are pervasive in our society. What I'm talking about is a political and ideological stance that I can shave my head, dress in a suit, grow a mustache, and say that I am a man. Are we going to be teaching the children that it is right for them to decide what gender they are? Are we going to be putting that in their minds? Because at Lincoln, one of the things that the PE teacher was describing was talking about finding yourself. Is that a euphemism for telling them that they need to pick a gender? Because I think that is abusive to children to say that. It's confusing. There are children that I know who are friends of the family, who have changed their gender. The young sister would still refer to her older sister, who had stated that she was a transgender boy, as her sister. And then all the little older teenage girls were attacking the middle school girl because she wasn't woke, and she was misidentifying, misgendering her sister, who is now a girl again, three years later. It is problematic to introduce these subjects to impressionable children. We don't need to waste parts of their lives deciding if they're a boy or a girl. I think that's wrong, and I think it leads to more mental health issues. I think we need to take care of our children, like I said, all children, even the ones that don't conform their gender. We can do that without teaching them that that's a choice that they should make. The students who already feel that way will feel that way, and we should have resources to help those children, and we should have a stern and no, you know, no-stopping, anti-bullying policies. There should be nobody afraid to say they identify as something else. Nobody is doing that to hurt anyone else. But if we are starting to confuse the children, that will hurt them. This is what I'm saying. We should be able to take care of the students who have these problems or issues, or wherever this stems from, feeling out of place in one's own body. That is not a good thing to feel. There are so many struggles in society. I am not proposing we add to that, as we know the suicide rate amongst transgender people is high. That is why I'm stressing, there should be no hatred about it, no bigotry about it. There is a place for everyone in our community. But we don't have to confuse the entire lot of children in order to have a safe space for the ones who need it to land. That is what I'm saying. That is why I am up here trying to get clarity, because that is what I'm against. We don't need to tell them all that they can pick their gender, because like I said before, that's a belief system, and not everyone holds true, even though that's the societal norm. And the pressure is to not say that. The pressure on, on people is because they're going to say you're a transphobe, you're a homophobe, you're hateful. We have to be able to speak what we believe is right for our children, what we think is harmful for our children, without hatred, without bigotry. I just want to be clear, what is, what, what is going to be discussed in terms of gender identity? Not gendered roles, not gender stereotypes, which no one seems to have a real problem with. Girls can wear blue, and boys can wear pink, and girls can like football, yes, great. We, we get that, we're above that point. What we want to know is just the truth on what is being taught to the children on these ideological hot-button issues. Thank you.
Hello. Andrea Trucco, 50 Park Ave. So I just really want to say how good these points have been so far. I feel kind of almost the same, but not really. So I just want to talk about my story real quick, and with the policies and the curriculum. It's, all of that is just the nitty-gritty things with the curriculum and the specific words that you need to use. I'm talking more about the policy that we now have money on the table. I'm talking about the points that we take away from following the state and, and the money crisis and things, and how to think about who really is fighting for them. Who? Who is it? It's not the parents, it shouldn't be the parents for that, or it's you guys, like, with the kids, we want to know who's fighting for them here. This, is it the system? We need... They're putting the children on the battlefield, and they're oppressive, they feel very pressed by it. So I really just want to see, you know, the past two years, we had COVID, and we had all these things happening, and it was really, really hard on the kids. So, you know, we're lucky that if we could work from home as parents, but then you have the masks, and then you have this and that, and all these changes for the kids. And they're just, they're just students, they have, they're just learning, and now they're so far behind. And I'm really trying to follow the, you know, the state policies and things like that, because we need the money. We need it for the district here. And I'm going to think, like, they're just not exposed to it. And I think, I know what's best for the students here, but really, I think what's best for the students is to follow through and to catch up with what they lost. Because you got, because they're focused on the money, but now we need to focus on the children. And just to have the best education possible. Money, it doesn't matter if you're happy. It's not about money, it's not about the health. Look, we have money, we have access to health. We don't need that for happiness. So what I want to say is I want you guys to support how to try to support the kids here. Mr. Silvestro, I'm the board attorney. Last week, he said something related to the law. That it's always a crime when a person shows minor obscene materials with the knowledge that you mean to arouse for some type of sexual gratification. So I'm thinking that if that's, okay, that's okay, but the state law is to protect the teachers, right? That they can't be sued for teaching these kids this, because the state is required, is requiring them to do it. So, you know, the people, they may think, maybe they have a sex addiction, maybe, maybe they have a background. This is the perfect opportunity for this kind of teacher to go in and teach, because they know they will be protected here. You can't sue me. You know, who's going to sue me? Who's going to sue me in this situation? They're children. They're children. And they, they're going to, they're not going to tell you if they're like being abused in elementary school, they're kids. And you know, oh, maybe, maybe this is just what it is, and they just have to accept it, this is education. How are they going to defend themselves? Who's going to voice for them? If parents don't know what's really happening in the classroom, what, what are they saying specifically? So really, there's, it's a really, really messy situation. It's been messy for two years now. So it's just making it worse for the children, so please just don't. Please.
Any additional questions or comments?
Hi, Madeline Brown, 13 Burgundy Road. Come to a lot of meetings, try not to speak a lot. Was here last week and did not speak up for fear. I mean, the officer walked someone out to her car last week. But as I'm listening to now, we have, teachers are automatically sex offenders, or sex offenders are becoming teachers to teach this curriculum. I think that I'm going to stand up for the teachers in our district. One thing I have said a lot to this board is that we have a serious teacher retention issue in this district. This is not helping. When we're getting up here and calling our teachers and accusing them of being sex offenders, and repeatedly saying that we don't trust them, and we do not trust them, this is being heard by our children, whether we're saying it to them or not. My kids have had teachers that I did not like. I went out of my way to not let them know that, because the kids need to respect their teachers in order for education to work. Education...
Please keep your comments to yourself, you're more than welcome to come up to the podium when it's your turn.
Education is a commitment between parents and educators. What's happening at the school board level, the administration level, is not the fault of our teachers. And we need to keep that in mind, because if I left here afraid, imagine how your kids' teachers are feeling every day, thinking that this is what their parents are telling the kids, and the kids are coming to school like this. Curricu- I don't interrupt you! Curriculum like this, which includes anti-bullying, was put into place because of what is happening with our children now. It is our job as parents to enforce this at home, when that's not happening on a much broader scale than just Caldwell. People are making curriculum to protect our children. This is exactly why this curriculum is in place. We are not teaching our children to not bully. We are not teaching our children to not interrupt other people when they're speaking. We are not teaching children to respect their teachers. If you don't trust your teachers, go somewhere else, but stop harassing our teachers that are here, because at this point, they're going to leave. In our minutes tonight, arguably, one of the best teachers in the district has put in for retirement. He might have gone anyway, I'm not sure, but there is nothing keeping them in this district right now. They have issues with our board, they have issues with our administration, and now the last hope for the parents is the, for the teachers, is the parents. And now we're listening to this. So just keep in mind, the teachers are in the middle here, and as you're discussing your issues with the board, with the state, with the administration, the teachers are in the middle, and it's not their fault. Thank you.
Jessica Crown, 183 Forest. I think I can speak for a majority of people who have been here since August, since June, that we have stated several times that we do not have any... that we have stated several times that we do not have anything against the teachers in this district. The teachers, we feel their backs are, are up against the wall. And you just stated that the admin, they have an issue with the administration and the board? Yes, they do, and so do we. So we are on the side of the teachers, okay? Because I don't think that they really want to teach this. It's evident in the meetings that we've had. But there has never once been anybody who has stood up here and said that a teacher is the problem. It's the administration beyond education.
Lou Farrar, 29 Dawson. I would, just to follow up on that, I am a teacher, and there's a number of people in here that are teachers, too. And I, I know last week, there's a number, number of people that were health and PE teachers that feel the same way that we do. So the one thing that bothers me, and should bother everybody, is that we should be able to have a discussion and disagree with each other, and not label someone anti-teacher because they disagree with this, or homophobic because they disagree with this, or anti-trans, or whatever term you want, you want to come up with. We can disagree and say this has no place in belonging in the schools whatsoever, and not have to be labeled one way or the other. That's simply, you know, we're just saying, whatever you want to teach at home, teach at home. We all want our kids to grow up to be respectful, respectful and responsible adults, and a member, a quality member of society. We just don't want this being taught particularly to our second-grade children. So please don't misinterpret this as an attack on teachers. And again, I, I'm hard-pressed to find any teachers that are leaving, mostly because of the community. A lot of it is because of the same issues that Jessica just mentioned before us, that have to do with the administration. And just to follow up on, on a separate side note, it just came to my head now, and I'll have to come up a third time. For the board attorney, uh, last week, if you could just confirm this for me, I think you did, but I just want to make sure. The ability to opt out, will that be an option every year for the health curriculum? So I, I guess my fear would be that families can have their child opt out this year, as it's a trial year, and then two years from now, my daughter's in second grade and is faced with this curriculum, that she would no longer have that option.
Mr. President? Uh, yes, it, it is state law, and it was, has been the law before this new curriculum was introduced, and it's still the state law now. So it is the, the health and family education and, and dissection are the two areas where you can opt your kids out of particular lessons. It's just become more public, but that right has been around, and there's no current bill or anything currently in the state to remove it, so. It's state law. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any quick, any additional questions or comments? Okay. If not, I'm going to ask for a motion to enter executive session. Do you have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools, we are now going to enter executive session. Brian, do you have a motion?
All in favor, aye. Aye. Days, restations, motion carried.
Thank you for coming.